It usually says on air, but...
Oh, are these on?
I think it's on now, yeah. It usually says on air. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, September 11th, 2018 School Board Regular Business Meeting. Please join us in the Pledge Allegiance.
The Pledge Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, I want to introduce our new student representatives. Thank you for being here. We have Julia Thorack and Piper Strunk. You're both juniors, or?
Juniors.
Yes, great. Welcome. Thank you for being here. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? May I have a motion for approval of school board minutes?
I move we approve the school board minutes for the special business meeting Tuesday, August 28th, 2018.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, next we have comments from our new student representatives.
So we just have a couple of things today since we just completed our first week. One thing is that throughout the whole past week, as advisors, we've been talking about instances if there were, or what we're supposed to do if there's ever happens to be an intruder in the school, because there's been some updates to that. And so now each classroom even has a special device for the doors that you can put in to make sure that they come in from the outside of the doors, so that it like keeps the doors from opening. And now each student also knows what to do, where to go, and like if, how to like make judgments if there happens to ever be an intruder.
And also, this past week, we've done a lot with a thing called Upper Links, which is kind of like a mentor program for the upperclassmen to try to touch base with the underclassmen and make sure the transfer from middle school to high school is nice and smooth. And this year, I think, was really successful. I was at Upper Link and was able to really connect with my underlink, and I think that if this program like continues, it's a really great thing. And we're going to continue on this program throughout the rest of the year, ensuring that they feel comfortable and safe at their high school.
Can you describe what you do, or how you, what you might do in the future?
Yeah, so what we do on the first day of school, because they come in early, they come in at 7:55 instead of the 11 o'clock when the rest of the school comes in, so we just walk them around the school, make sure they know where their classes are, make sure they know who their teachers are, if they have any questions for us. And then throughout the year, we'll just touch base, email with them, see if they have any questions or concerns, need any help on anything in terms of studying, things like that. Tomorrow, we're doing a cookie ticket, so we're giving each of them a free cookie from the lunchroom, so we have to pass those out tomorrow. And I think later on the year, we're going to do like an ice cream social type thing for the freshmen at lunch, so it's just trying to make them feel included and they know their way in high school.
That's great. Sure, they appreciate it.
I think they do, yeah.
Thank you. Moving on, are there any comments from the public on agenda items? Then we will move on to administrative reports by A, our principals.
Good evening. It's great to be back. It's good to see everyone, and welcome to new student representatives. So I'll be as brief as I can, there's a lot I'd love to share, but I'll just share a few things that have been happening at Pond Cove over the past few weeks. So we've, we've had a really great start. There's, I think, a good vibe and a positive energy throughout the building. I think that's increasing every day, and it was great to see the staff come together on the first opening day, on the first building-based day on October 28th. We did a lot of trainings, mandatory trainings, logistics, but we also did some activities around a book called Eight Habits of the Heart. And so I just, it's a really good quick read. I know our beach days are over, but this, you could read this in one, in one sitting, really. It's, it's written by Clifton Talbert, and in the book, he really emphasizes habits that members of healthy and strong communities exhibit. And I think that we had, we had a good time with the staff doing some activities around this, and I think that staff felt it was relevant to the work that we're doing this year. Also, it's, it's, we're rolling out several new initiatives, and I wanted just to talk about a couple. So all of our teachers now are trained in the responsive classroom, community-building approach. And if, it's an easy, responsive classroom is an easy program to Google and learn about, but we're really proud, it's a four-day intense training, and our teachers K through four now have been trained in that, and their strategy, they learned a lot of strategies they use in the classroom to build community, so we're proud of that. We're, we're also rolling out our school-wide positive behavior intervention and supports program called Peaceful Pond Cove, and that's, it's really exciting, so we've rolled that out to staff and students. Just, it, Peaceful Pond Cove is, it's part of our ongoing work to foster, foster positive behavior and, and the teaching of social skills, social and emotional skills. And so, just a couple bullets on that. So already at Pond Cove, we've developed common expectations in all the common areas, so hallway, playground, cafeteria, restroom, all students have been taught those expectations by their teachers already. We've also worked closely with Pat Fowler and the bus drivers, and we have taught all students bus safety expectations, and so I thank Pat and the drivers for that. So we also have, so we teach the expectations, we have a systematic approach to recognizing positive behavior in our school, which is really exciting, and we're just rolling that out. And we are developing plans for students when they need extra support, if they're struggling with social, emotional skills. So finally, the last thing, we're excited, next week, we are beginning our volunteer program. And so we reached out with the help, with John Holdridge's help, and I was actually going to ask him to come up just and, and share just for a minute about some of the work that he's done. This is our first big project that we worked on together. And so the volunteers, the first phase of this is we're starting with a team of volunteers who will support our cafeteria supervision of students and support our recycling, composting program. So, John, would you mind coming up just, just for a minute? So, just to talk a little bit about the process you went through. Hi.
Hi.
I promised I would keep it quick. Welcome. Nice to see you guys. So yeah, we, we did a, I really like projects, and I like when somebody asks me to be on the team with them, so it's been fun to work with Jason to meet the need with volunteers. We put out a call through different ways, I think Jason sent out an email to parents at Pond Cove with a Google form to, to sign up to meet the need of lunchroom volunteers. We've had a much better response than I expected. We've asked people to sign up for three-hour shifts on one day a week. We've divided the year into roughly three-month segments, thinking that a person could maybe, maybe commit to three hours one day, a day a week for three months, and then, you know, they can re-up if they really love it, but otherwise, we'll get some others. So the first segment will start on, on Monday and run until the end of November. Just to make sure that all of our volunteers who are doing this work are, have all their boxes checked for the volunteer protocol, I'm going to do a special lunchroom volunteer orientation, beginning from, starting at 11, running till 11:30, and then Jason is going to meet with them and talk about their specific expectations for that. So we've got 13, actually 14 people signed up and scheduled. We're shooting for four for each day, you know, that'll sometimes be wishy-washy depending on people's schedules, but I think for the most part, we'll have, be able to maintain three, or if not four, on every day for, at least for these first three months, and I would imagine that we'll be able to do that for the year. That's that.
Yeah. I had heard from some parents that were interested in participating, but the three-hour window felt like a bigger chunk of time than they were able to commit to. Are you opening it up to smaller chunks, or is the three-hour really what?
We actually intentionally made it as, as three hours, because originally, Jason sent me a schedule that had all of the very micro, you know, you're in for 20 minutes and you're out, and that tends to be really chaotic, trying to manage a volunteer coming in for 20 minutes and then leaving. We had, you know, the fear that, because we're also eventually looking for some people to volunteer on recess. So my idea was that if people can commit, they would, it would be easier on both sides of the equation, both our side managing volunteers, as well as volunteers coming in, to see if we could just get people for three-hour chunks, and so far, that hasn't seemed to be a problem. And so I think for now, we're not going to, to change that. We're looking for a longer commitment. My experience with, with volunteers in our schools, but also talking with other volunteer coordinators at schools and organizations, is, is, it seemed to be a more significant assignment that you're signing up for, and sometimes with more significant things, there's a lot more, a lot more buy-in to it, I think. So for now, we'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Thank you, John and Jason. This is very exciting, and I'm really proud that our parents are stepping up too, very grateful.
Yeah, we're excited too. That's all I have, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need my, I need these things now. When I can find them, I use them. So, at the middle school, we're pretty excited with the way the year started off. We kind of, we have some changes to our schedule to kind of increase academic time, and, and we've kind of streamlined some things. For our kids, I think it's nothing new. For teachers, they're, they're bought in and are really going forward with that. A couple of initiatives, A, our buildings look great, and I was in all summer, so you could kind of see it coming together, but I'm like, there is no way this is going to be ready for school. There were boxes and cabinets and shelves, and somehow, it just, it comes together. So, so the maintenance crews and the custodian crews are just incredible, when you really think about the amount of work they pull off in the summer. So, so kudos to them. It really allows us to have an opening to school that is kind of stress-free. Great new doors at the end of the fifth grade wing, and a lot of upgrades happened that people notice, and it makes them, you know, feel better about working and, and kids about going to school, I think. It's just, this time of year kills me. It's like, it should be called Forms Time of Year. So, you know, we have picture forms and schedule forms and lunch forms and assurance forms and laptop forms, health forms, the new immunization form where kids, if it wasn't completed, they were not going to come to school. On Saturday night before school start, before that Tuesday, our school nurse called me, she's like, "There's 59 kids. There's 59. We can't keep 59 kids at the school." So she, on her own, kept calling, and on Sunday, it was down to 11, and Monday, it was five, and by Tuesday, it was nine. So it, persistence pays off, is kind of what I told her. But we're fortunate to have people that take such pride in that. The athletic forms, on top of all those forms, schedule change forms. So there's this, there's a form for everything, and nothing's important until it's crucial, so then we all, we get them all. Some really interesting new programs that we have this year, we have developed a social emotional classroom, and it's up and off the ground and running really well. And it's, it's really interesting to see, when provided the right amount of supports, how successful all students can be, and that's, that's an ongoing, I think it's going to develop into, hopefully, one of the leading programs in the area. That's our goal, is, is to not just provide a program, but develop a great program. We also have a school counseling and social work curriculum this year that has grown a lot, and I think we're, students will get around 30 guidance, school counselor, social worker lessons this year, whereas in the past, it was around 10. So to me, that's pretty empowering of their curriculum and the work, and how important we value it. And then lastly, I'm excited, a little bit nervous, the Thompson family has joined in with CEF to provide a grant to the district for some mental health awareness type activities. We, being the big, big picture people we are, decided it should be a year-long thing and kick off this Friday, and now we realize, wow, that's really fast. There's a lot of stuff that has to happen between now and Friday. But really quickly, Jill Young has kind of, again, spearheaded this for us, and it's really a year-long focus on personal and mental health and wellness, and it's kind of, the tagline is, "You will be found at CEMS," and some, the four goals are to empower students, staff, and parents to be proactive, confident, and caring for themselves and others, so to build those kind of skills in everyone. The second goal is to provide tools and tips for improving mental health. Third goal is to introduce health resources in or near our school community. And the last one is to decrease the stigmas around mental health. So it's, it's, it's an exciting initiative, and on Thursday night, we have a kickoff for a parent night with a panel that keeps growing. I think it must be up around 12 or 13 people now, because we have some high school people that it has meant a lot to, and they've reached out to us, some kids saying, "Hey, can I serve on that panel?" So to me, when we can start to make those links from building to building, and kids in the high school actually care about what's going on below them, it means a lot to me. So that's going to be Thursday night. Friday is one day of a lot of activity. We have paired, we have No Stigmas, a group we're partnering with to deliver this message or to kick it off with our kids. They're coming Monday for a whole-school assembly, and then we're going to do some breakout groups, but it's also combined with Picture Day, so we're trying to build a schedule that, that we can manage and limit the disruptions on other days. So whenever possible, we're going to kind of team those things up. So there's a lot happening at the middle school right now, seems like it's all coming really quickly, but I hope to see you guys there on Thursday. It's in the library at the middle school. Thanks.
Thank you, Troy.
So I've decided that I'm going to embellish on what Julia talked about, in terms of the focus at the beginning of the year on emergency preparedness, and it may sound like an odd thing to begin with, but I think what we found is that our students want to talk about it and feel better about having an outlet to talk about it and having a sense of what the plan is. I do want to say sort of tangentially, two things first, and one is Officer Galvin is now a steady presence at the, at the front entrance of the school every day, wishing kids welcome and, and giving them high fives and sharing, asking them questions and that sort of thing, so I think he's been extraordinarily well-received. He still spends time at the middle school in Pond Cove as well. I just wanted to also share an anecdote, which I found very touching, that Nate Carpenter shared with me just before I left today, which was, at the end of the day, he said, "For the last two days, there have been two young men who have just, on their own, in the cafeteria stood up and started stacking chairs to help out Randy Dill, our lunchtime custodian." I thought that was really kind of cool. It says a lot about, I think it was two senior boys, actually, so nobody asked them to do it, they just started to stack chairs with Randy, which is really cool. So, so we spent considerable time in the first three days of school after the chaos day of, Tuesday after Labor Day, but the next three days, each one of the advisory periods was focused, we shared with students where we are in terms of what if there were a violent intruder at Cape Elizabeth High School. And this is work that is, this was sort of an outgrowth of really conversations that started almost two years ago now, and there have been some significant changes. I will say that we framed our conversations with kids essentially helping them to understand that statistically speaking, and I put this in a letter to parents, statistically speaking, kids are safer in any public high school in America, including Cape Elizabeth High School, than they are if they're out driving in a Route 77, or Old Ocean House Road, or riding a bike anywhere. Statistically, they're safer, but there are violent intruders that have been coming to schools, and schools like Cape Elizabeth are no exception. We are not a bubble, we are not immune. And so we wanted to do a better job of being prepared. So working with some folks from the police department, the superintendent last year, all the building administrators, fire department, and other folks, there's been a considerable shift in philosophy, and I think Nate presented last year, about sort of what the plans are. So, day one of our work with students, students were introduced to the general concepts of what the shift is, which is, the way Nate explains it, based on the training he's had, is that the traditional way that we respond in schools is something that was based, came out of the 1970s, when drive-by shootings were a real problem in schools in America. So the best response to that is to, is to close the doors, turn off the lights, and huddle low, away from windows and away from doors. And that beautiful response to that, but that's not the threat that people are facing typically now. So now, what all across America, based on best advice from a lot of people who study these issues, is to take a more active approach, to try to get people out of harm's way, if, based on the best information we can get them, it's, it's wise to do that. So we've talked to students and to teachers about sometimes the wisest thing, if you know that there, if, if, God forbid, there were a violent intruder in a distant part of the school on their first floor, advisory groups, teachers, and classrooms can probably make the judgment to leave, and we've given them various points, some various exit points, exit places, destinations for them to go to. Or, if there's an intruder that's close by, then sometimes not just locking the door, which any teacher can do right now, just by pushing a button, the button which is on the inside of the door, they, they can not just do that, but take some more active responses. And the first one, and this is all credit to Nate Carpenter, the assistant principal, and Aiden Hubs, who's a senior, and Jim Ray, who sort of worked collaboratively together to invent this device. This is what Julia was referring to. So these are available now, along with a two-by-four in every classroom in the high school, and students have practiced, and advisors have practiced, sort of sweeping this under the door before they close it, putting it, and closing the door, pushing the button, and having a two-by-four as well. It gives an extra layer of security. The locks work well, but it's just an extra layer, because what all the security people who've studied incidents across America say is, you know, people who typically come into schools to do violence are not trained to people, they don't necessarily have specific targets in mind, and to the extent you can slow them down, they won't pass by. That's sort of the theory. So that's what we've been practicing. So day one is just sort of introducing that concept, the overall picture. Day two was students actually practice barricading the rooms, and I think they enjoyed that. I think there was a lighthearted feel to it, but also a seriousness to it, and that was really by intent. And day three was Nate had prepared some scenarios that he had earlier shared with the staff, and what if this was the information you have, what would you do? What would be the most logical response, and what would be, you know, some other different scenarios? A couple of advisory groups, I happen to have an advisory group, and I heard Ben Raymond, as he was, was one of the teachers in the high school, as he was coming in, he was talking about taking his kids out so they could actually physically see one of the, one of the locations we've told them they could gather at, and he had the brilliant idea of, because it was on the way, Cumberland Farms was on the way to this location, so he said, "We're going to have the lockdown special." So he brought his advisory groups to the, to Cumberland Farms on the way, and treated his kids to the lockdown special of a snack as they went there. So I followed him, so my advisory group was just behind Ben Raymond's group, so, so again, it's done in a way to try to make it not, to, to try to open up the lines of communication, give kids and staff a sense of control. This has actually been more of a shift for the staff, honestly, it was a little harder than, than for kids, but also to give them an outlet and, and, but to keep it as, yeah, this is serious, and we're taking it seriously, and we've given a lot of thought to it, but we can build relationships through it as well, and walk to Cumberland Farms, Town Hall, or something like that. So that's my report.
That's great. Thank you so much, Jeff. And please tell Nate we appreciate it very much, and tell Jim Ray, I appreciate him bringing in my son for help. It's really cool.
Yep, yep, great. Thank you.
Next would be Director of Special Services, our new director. Del Peavy, welcome.
Hello. I, being the first time I'm addressing the board, I wanted to thank the board, Dr. Wolfram, and of course, the hiring committee for giving me this opportunity to serve both parents and students of Cape Elizabeth. I just have a few things to share with you folks today. I want to mention that all of our special education positions are currently filled, with the exception of one ed tech three position at the middle school, and the full-time psychologist position. And I mention this because the significance of this is that many of our, many of the other districts in the state are starting the year off with empty positions, and it's wonderful that Cape has a great reputation and is able to attract the, the folks that it does. And I've only been on the job for less than three weeks, but probably the, the biggest thing that I've come to realize is that we have wonderful resources here at Cape for our students, and extensive resources. I did want to mention, we just hired Dr. Beverly Strock on a contracted basis to help complete the psychological evaluations across the district. I also wanted to mention that special education is under review this year, or audit from the state, and so we'll be going through the process of meeting the criteria that they're asking for. It includes a self-evaluation, a certain number of files will be reviewed, and they'll be making a visit as well in March. I think they're set up, they are set up to come to Cape on March 12th. I want to mention that currently, we are servicing 155 students in special ed. At Pond Cove, we're servicing 53, at the middle school, 51, and at the high school, 51. We have 24 students currently in referral, and we have two students that are outplaced out of district. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, you're next.
Good evening, everyone. So we've been in school for a week, and teachers have been focused on acclimating students to their classrooms and routines, et cetera, but we have our first professional development Wednesday, next Wednesday, the 19th, and I thought I would fill you in on what the teachers are going to be doing. You know that students dismiss an hour before the end of the regular school day, and then teachers stay for an hour beyond that, so we get two hours of solid work time, which is much appreciated by, by the staff. So at Pond Cove, last year, teachers spent a couple of PD Wednesdays looking at the next-generation science standards, and being in the process of aligning their curriculum to that, and you will see that reflected on the report cards that are issued in January and June. Most of the classroom teachers worked this summer on developing scope and sequences in science aligned to their curriculum, aligned to the standards that, that they're going to be implementing. And, and on the 19th, they're going to review those and also unpack some kits that we purchased for them to help them implement, because in some cases, teachers were having to completely change what they had done in the past, and so we did have to invest in some curriculum materials. So our, these, these kits are STEM scopes, which is a highly rated science curriculum, and teachers are using that in combination with an online program called Mistress Science that's been very successful, and has been used by some teachers here and there, and then also some teacher-generated materials. But that will be the focus of, of, of the work at Pond Cove. And then at the middle school, our teachers are going to be reporting this year to learning targets, so they're going to be setting their gradebooks up by learning goals for students rather than by type of assessment, which is the more typical model. So you have your test category and your project category and your essay category, and this time, this year, we're going to be having, we're going to be organizing the gradebooks by the, by the learning targets, so that we can give students more specific information about what their strengths and areas for challenge are as learners. So rather than saying, "Well, I'm good at essays, but not so good at projects," they'll be able to say, "Well, I'm really strong at reading, and I need to work on writing. I'm really strong at fractions, but I need to work on measurement and volume." So that's a big shift for the, for the teachers, just in terms of how they organize their assessments and how they organize power teacher pro, and so they will be working on that next Wednesday. And then at the high school, the teacher's going to be looking at SAT data from the last few years, just trying to surface some, some trends and, and talk about reasons why we might be going up in certain areas and, and down in, in others. That will be the work at the high school. Any questions? Thank you again for giving us that time. It's really much appreciated.
Thank you, Kathy. Next, we have Catherine Lesberg, Business Manager.
Hello, everybody.
Hello, everybody. I'm not usually, in the past, I haven't stood up here on a monthly basis, but I'm going to start now. Last June was my first time. So, I wanted to speak about our monthly financials, and also about the accounts payable check register that I always bring for you guys to sign. It isn't required to have all of your signatures. Other districts have finance committees that are like a subcommittee of the school board, and so those members are normally the ones that sign. Here, the finance committee is the entire board, so that doesn't quite change the situation at all. So, I just wanted to put before you what you would prefer. If you prefer to have a subset of members just review and sign the weekly check registers, or if you'd like to continue, have it done here at the board meetings, I'll bring it to you twice a month, or when you meet, for you to sign. Just putting it out there for you to kind of think about it, and let me know what you would prefer to do, so we can move on from there. Now, I'm going to talk about the financials. They have changed a little bit since previous years. The cover page is still the same. It still shows the 11 categories that are required by statute. But if you, when you turn the page, instead of being perpendicular now, it is sideways. It's actually a little easier to read, the numbers are a little bigger. So, that's a slight change. Another change that I wanted to point out to you is, we've added some information for you guys. In the past, what we would just supply for you was just the general fund, just the budget that you vote on every, every year. But now, we've included all the grant and special funds that the school district has authority over. So, it starts on page 29 of the financials. The page number's on the upper right-hand corner. So, this shows you our Title I funds, Title II, the local entitlement IDA, special ed grants. It also shows you special funds that we have, like through SEAF. It shows you all the grants that we have through SEAF. And so, you can see all the additional funds that the school department has available to them at this time. So, that's, that's a little new than what we used to do. And another thing I just wanted to...
I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm just, I'm not sure what I'm supposed to be looking for on page 29 or other pages.
Not a problem. If you go to page 29, you'll see on the upper left-hand corner, it says Interfund 20, and upper left-hand corner.
No. Oh, there.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay. That Interfund 20 means that these are all special funds outside of the regular budget. The auditor always refers them to Fund 20. So, when you, when they do the audit report, you'll see in the audit report, Fund 20 possibly, special, special revenues kind of thing. So, I'm including that in here for you guys to see. It hasn't been included in the past, but it's money that you should also be fully aware of. So, that's what, that is what, page 29 through page 40 is all those additional funds. They're not all federal grants, some of them are local grants, such as the SEAF grants, but those are all listed here. So, if you have any questions about anything in the financials, please contact me, ask me now, whatever. I'll try to do my best to answer any questions you have. So, the next thing I wanted to quickly go over is how I analyze this report, because what I normally do to look at it to make sure we're on track is the main thing... Oh, yes, Heather?
I have a question.
Sure.
Sorry if I'm slow on this.
No.
You're saying this page is not what was in the budget.
That, starting on page 29? What this page, page 29, page 30, those are carryforwards from the previous year.
Right.
So, those are...
Not allotted for any kind of budget.
What happens on the, this item that says encumbrances, those were budgeted for in the previous year's budget. What happens is, at the end of the year, we have a facilities project that's still needing, like they wanted to do the wiring in the middle school. We couldn't get to it last year. So, that's one example of, well, we had the money in the budget last year, but we didn't get to it, so we want to carry it forward into the new year. And this is a perfectly acceptable procedure per the auditors.
So, the, the money used to pay for these, many of these are either coming from, as you mentioned, a local grant, a federal grant, or perhaps from last year's budget?
This...
So, for example, I'm looking at this one, tech supplies and repairs for $70,000.
Yep.
That seems like a big ticket number.
What, what that was, that is primarily that $65,000 project that we didn't get to last year for the wiring at the middle school.
Yeah.
Everything in Department 9077, which is what you see right under the words Interfund 20?
Yes.
That is just carryforwards from the previous year's budget. If you turn the page, you'll see different department titles, like on page 30, underneath Department 9077, you have Department 9650, HS Greenhouse Fund. That's for the new high school greenhouse that we're trying to raise money for.
Right.
So, you'll see there's a whole bunch of different departments here that, that are all examples of different grants, or different pockets of money.
But what this document doesn't tell us is where the money is coming from specifically.
True.
Is that true?
Yeah, that's very true. All of these different...
I mean, I don't say that critically, I'm just saying that for understanding.
No, that's, you're, you are totally right. I could try to make the headings, if, that's another question. If you want more detail on the headings, let me know, because this first section is carryforwards from the previous year. As you go along, there's the high school greenhouse fund. There is, we're building money for the turf field replacement. That's what the turf field, I take it back, that's not what that turf field's for. There's a lot of accounts. These turf field expenses are just normally for regular expenses using the turf fields that we, we would use rental income to help offset expenditures. We haven't had as much in rental incomes in the past as we had farther back, so we don't have a lot of money there, but that's what that section was set up for. And then you have the title funds, which are all federal grants. You have Title 1A, Title 2A, local entitlement, those are all federal grants. So, this whole section, this Fund 20, or Interfund 20, is a group of a whole bunch of different grants from all different pockets of money, which is, Heather's totally right. Seeing this, this is just the expenditure side. You don't, it doesn't show you where the money goes. It doesn't show you whether this is local, or federal, or what it is, so.
I think, yeah, I just, to piggyback it, so, encumbrances is listed, so that's, the other ones are the confusing ones.
Yeah. So, I can, I can understand that. John?
So, I guess what, some of the clarity might be, there might be some, even still some additional information, because predominantly, what we've been seeing before is just the expense side of a budget we'd already reviewed. So, we know the income source of that is singular.
True.
And so, now you're having the expense size of different miscellaneous incomes. So, it would probably be helpful to add on a sort of running total also of, of where the various income sources are, and were expected to be. For example, if we have delays in one of our larger grants, that would be something we'd want to be able to know and see what's expected to be marked against that. Not that I'm expecting it, but that's the, that's the missing piece of, you added this, that's great. Because everything else relates to one singular item, we know it's not as necessary to have the counterbalancing piece, but in this case, I think it would be very helpful to sort of say, here was last year's fund, here's where we are in this year's fund. That would be actually very helpful, to sort of see that second half of the balance sheet of the income and expenses, particularly on the miscellaneous accounts. So, keeps us from any surprises.
Okay. One thing I do want to point out, and the federal grants and the SEAF grants, is that you'll see negative accounts a lot, because they're reimbursement funds. We don't get the money from the feds or from SEAF until we invoice them. So, there is, you'll always see a negative, so that's a good point for you to be aware of. Just because it's negative doesn't mean the money's not there, I can. I do have an Excel spreadsheet that I prepare for the auditor that shows all the revenue, all the anticipated revenue and stuff, that I can prepare for you guys, so you can see the ins and outs kind of thing.
So, that kind of fund accounting and reimbursement accounting is not, not a problem at all, it's just, it's just not visible currently. And I think actually, that sort of specific wrinkle is actually really important, to not only be visible, be known, so, because the first time that's sort of published, if it's not published with that sort of explanation, you may get people reacting more strongly than would be warranted.
Duly noted. Thank you.
So, now you're giving us just enough information to be dangerous.
Well, I got to say, Donna's like, "Are you sure?"
Well, I, I think, I think this presentation is, is excellent, but I, I think that the questions we're asking are, we, we see the numbers department, it's a little cryptic, and each time you said it says title, I can understand now, and okay, I know that means a federal grant, but perhaps if there's, is a way to put information into those fields to say, "This is the SEAF grant, this is the football booster," is like, for each of these, because that, that's probably what would make it more digestible to us, so that, I mean, maybe I can, maybe we can stop by your office, and you can tell me what they mean, but it may make more sense, just to make the field more...
A little bit more detailed, like federal versus local. And SEAF, some of them are clear, some of them, as you said, are cryptic, so it is definitely...
So, I think if you, if you list the incoming funds, and you have these, the, the account numbers have some sort of matching component to them, then you'll be pretty easy to be able to flip through and say, "Okay, this is Title II Account 9070, whatever." It's like, oh, here's the grant money, income for grant Title whatever, 970, includes accounts 970 through 9 whatever. So, you, if you have that piece, you can match them in the titles as you put it forward, so you can match...
I, I hear you. I'm going to see if I can provide something next month, and I'm thinking this may be a work in process, so hopefully, we'll work together, and I'll get you the information that you guys want to hear. So, I just figured, hey, let's...
I just have a comment here. I mean, we don't want to make too much work for you. If these codes are standard codes in your books, leave them as it is, if they follow the state or the regulations, or the federal, leave as it is. Just make it like an index or legend, a cheat sheet, saying this code equals this. We'll have that in our binder, we'll put it in our pocket, we'll put it on the table, we'll just follow that.
Okay. I'll see what I can do. So, I did want to quickly go through how I analyze the general budget, or all of them, but pretty much the general budget, is this, what I look at first is how many pay periods we've gone through for the first, for the staff that are paid year-round. Almost all staff are paid year-round, except for ed techs and secretaries. So, what I do is, we've gone through five pay periods. This, this report includes the first pay period in September, so if you take five divided by 26, because they're paid every two weeks, that's 19.23%. So, you can look at most of the salary lines and see where we are. There are some that are over expended, there are some that are a little under, that happens, people move, somebody leaves, we hire somebody who's much more experienced at a higher rate, so you'll see that, some of that fluctuation. And another thing I look at is, how many months are we into the fiscal year? Currently, we're into, two months into the fiscal year, which is only 16.67%. And as you'll notice on the cover page, we're at 18%. The reason why we're at 18% is because during the summer, we buy a lot of our supplies. During the summer, we have a lot of facilities work done, and during the summer, we also have a lot of transportation work done on the buses. So, it makes sense that we're a little higher than what you would look at if you took the 12 months and divided it per month. So, I just want to let you know, that's how I kind of look at it, and make sure that we're on track or not.
Can you just explain, so, there, what are the five pay periods then, if you, if you do it monthly?
Well, for, currently, we've gone through July, there are two pay periods in July. We went through August, there are two pay periods in August, and this report shows the first pay period in September. Normally, people get paid 26 pays a year, almost every month is two pay periods, except for two months out of the year, where there are three pay periods. So, that's how I look at when the report was created, and look at how many pay periods have gone by.
So, you're just saying this one is five pay periods?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you said...
Yes. Because of the point in time when this report was created.
Okay. Thank you.
John?
So, you, you sort of explained this once before, and it's very helpful, but one additional bit of information, I'm not sure if this is possible, but you sort of talk about the percentage of the account that's expended. And as you indicated, a number of the accounts, some of them sort of have different patterns of spending.
Yes.
And so, one of the things, rather than also just comparing to last year's number, last year's percent at that date would actually be very helpful. So, I mean, and some of them, for example, CIP is, might move around, because the numbers may move around a lot, but in general, just the percentage you're going to use, and how the, the characters of the account probably won't change much. And as a reviewer of these accounts, the ones I would pay attention to are the ones where, "Oh, we're far off of where we were previously in our spending percentage." That would cause me, rather than looking number to number, because those, then you have to sort of dig in and say, "Okay, what's the numbers, what, where the budget changed?" And it doesn't give me that sort of read as to where we are on the map. So, if that's possible to do, compare percent usage to prior year percent usage, that would be really helpful.
Okay. I will look into that. Anything else?
Thank you, Catherine. Looks, thank you so much.
You're welcome, guys.
The, the data continues to improve, and we really appreciate it. Don't take our comments as not being appreciative of what you're doing. This is, it continues to get better and better. We really do appreciate all the work that you do, and the way you present the material. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. I, I think of this as a kind of collaborative effort. I'm trying to give you the information you need to do your job correctly. I just need feedback from you guys, so let me know what you need, what you need, so we'll work on this together.
Thank you.
That's good. Thank you.
We have the superintendent's report.
So, our first week, week and a half of school was very, very smooth. The opening went well. And we did have a bus driver resign, and you probably have heard that throughout the state of Maine, bus drivers are in shortage. We had just enough, so as a result of this resignation, Pat Fowler did some of her magic and combined two of the bus routes. Yesterday was the first day that, that the bus, the new bus routes were running, and she said, "Yesterday was a little challenging, but I did get an email from her at the end of the day today," and she said it went much better. So, we're working on that. She did inform parents on Friday, so. You received the enrollment report in your packet. The total numbers indicated decrease of 23 students since September of 2017, but the encouraging news is that the kindergarten class is 28 students, larger than last year's kindergarten class, so that is encouraging. The Maine School Board Association Conference is scheduled for October 25th and 26th, and I don't know if any of you have gone in the past, but it's a, it's a great conference. Our attorneys, Drummond and Woodson, do many of the sessions, and they really are relevant to what's going on in schools today. There was a keynote speaker, his name is Jamie Volmer, and he's the president of Volmer Incorporated, a public education advocacy, advocacy firm working to halt the erosion of public trust and build support for America's schools. So, if you're interested in attending this conference, please let Erin know, and she can get you registered. So, it's, it's a good conference, I go every year. We are having a budget planning meeting between the town and the school board representatives on Thursday, September 13th, at nine o'clock, to really plan for a collaborative budget experience, and it will, the committee will consist of a town manager, the chair of the town council, the chair of the school board, I think maybe the vice chair, and, and I will attend. And it'll, it'll just be a planning session on what can we do to, to bring the two groups together as we discuss the budget. So, some of the things that we'll talk about are timelines for the budget creation, necessary information to consider, dates for combined meetings, things like that. So, we can give you more information after that meeting, that planning meeting, it's, it's a planning meeting. At the last school board meeting, I spoke about the timeliness and need to enter into the strategic planning process, and again, the A-team met today, and we've been studying Peter Sengay's The Fifth Discipline, about the arrows going in the same direction, and we began to talk today about this, what is that direction? And so, we really do need a planning process that would give us our vision and mission, and guiding principles about where, where we're going. The cost of a facilitator for this event is about $5,000, and that will cover the cost of the planning, the day, actually, it might be a day and a half. a half, depending on what we decide, and preparations for the event, including all the necessary materials. So I would ask that the board have a vote of support in moving forward with this process. So I don't feel comfortable just moving forward on my own. I'd really like a vote of support on that, so.
Would you like us to vote right now?
I think that's next on the agenda.
Oh, oh, there we go. Perfect. Any questions?
So I asked some questions, comments on the, on the report, then I, do we do that before we vote? I'm happy to do it either way.
If you're done with your reports?
I am.
You are? Okay. So why don't we make up? Do you have questions on the superintendent?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
So it was just a comment, particularly around some of the enrollment numbers, and it's just as a note to Jeff Shedd as well, it was, it was unusual reduction in the numbers of older students, predominantly, when I went back, and I've looked at the sort of how the classes mature, they tend to grow between kindergarten and about fourth grade pretty substantially. Middle school, they sort of move around fairly flat, some ups and downs, but generally flat, and then you lose about a little bit, little bit when you move from middle school to high school. But this year, the drop in the middle school to high school, and within the high school class, seemed larger than it traditionally is, and I was, and it was a bunch of 11th grade students in particular. I was just wanted to know if there was, get some character to what's going on, because it was a bit of an unusual trend, and it was a little bit surprising when I was sort of looking at some of the numbers. So just something to sort of think about, and report back, and sort of have our finger on the pulse of, because those sorts of sort of class size forecasting things get to be important, and that's one of the, those were some of the numbers that were surprising to me when I looked at the, this year's enrollment reports. You'll see pretty much every single class actually either stayed the same or grew until you get to about the, what happened in the high school and middle school classes, and those dropped more than they have in the past.
Great. We can get that information and get back to you.
Elizabeth?
You shouldn't have brought this up, John, because you just sparked something in my mind, which is, so anecdotally, I've heard about a number of students away on exchange programs for the junior year, and so my question would be, do we count those students as part of our enrollment, even though they're studying in France, or England, or wherever, there, I mean, there's just a number, if Facebook is anything to judge by, everybody going to the airports and confiding their children. So that might be an avenue to explore, and that's something I haven't, I had no idea, if a student, they're obviously not enrolled in our school this year, so maybe they can't be counted towards enrollment, although they actually are, they're gonna be back.
Or students.
And likewise, students that are from overseas that are spending a year, are they considered?
Yeah.
If that's the kind of things going on, that's exactly what we wanna know. Because those are more predictable than random, and.
We will get you some information on that.
Another thing, I don't know, Mr. Shedd might be able to shine more light into this. I know a lot of students this year, from the junior class especially, are now enrolled in PATHS, which is a program where you take some classes into things that you're really interested about outside of school, at a school called PATHS, and then take some of your core classes in Cape, but you don't necessarily go to Cape Elizabeth High School as much. So I don't know if they consider those students as PATHS students, or as Cape Elizabeth High School students, but that could be one other reason.
Thanks for bringing that up. I believe all students that go to PATHS from Cape are considered Cape students.
And both.
Doing well. Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. That's a good, good point.
Do you want me to speak to this now, or just for a moment?
Might as well, if you have something you have to add.
You're right, we've had, it's been a trend. I don't know, I haven't seen this this year. I think, I think the, there's always a little bit of a change from the middle school to the high school. I do think what is absolutely unique this year, and it's fascinating, is that we do have about six students, and they're mostly juniors, who are away for a semester or for a year. We cannot count those for subsidy purposes, obviously because the state subsidizes us in part, so they are, as far as the state is concerned, and our, our school numbers are concerned, they are not students at Cape Elizabeth High School. When they return, which they will, they will be re-enrolled, and those numbers will go up again.
That, that's very helpful. That was the number that it was exactly surprising to me as I looked through the data.
It surprised me when I looked at it. I know we did have a few families who moved as well, but that was the difference this year.
Yeah, there's usually that level of small number, but that was a big number in the middle of a class.
Yep.
But then likewise, if there's a student here, for example, from Spain for the year?
We have four exchange students.
Right. Are they considered part of the enrollment then, even though they're not permanent residents at Cape Elizabeth?
Someone has to count them. They are, they are part of the enrollment, but we don't get subsidy for those foreign exchange students. But I think in the numbers that you're seeing, but again, we have foreign exchange students come in virtually every year, so that's no different. What's different is the outflow due to the other, other issues.
Thanks, Jeff. And then Donna, you mentioned the MSBA conference, and we usually send a delegate, and I believe John is our appointed delegate for that meeting.
I was the alternate, and Barbara wasn't able to go, so I was actually the delegate last year. I went, it was a great conference, I'd encourage anyone to go.
I thought that we decided that you were the.
I'm happy to do it again.
I'm just, I'm just saying, you were the delegate for this coming year, and Nasser was the alternate.
Yep.
So just between you two.
For the delegate assembly.
Yeah.
Yes.
So just between you two, you can decide, you both can go, obviously, if you want to. Okay, now we have, may I have a motion, please, for item six? I move the school board supports a strategic planning process.
Second.
Any discussion?
Hello. What is the process? Is it putting RFP out, talking to consultants? How does it work? Strategic planning, we hire consultants, we do it together, the consultant come over here, and we do as a team?
The process I participated in, we hired a facilitator, and there was a Friday night, Saturday, group of members of the community, large number of members of the community. People are invited, trying, trying to get people from all areas, and representatives from all different community groups. So they, like I said, it was, it was a large number. The one I participated in was, we had 70 from the community. So the facilitator led us through various activities, looking at what, what were some historical aspects of the community, thinking about impacts of things that were going on today in our, in our world, on our educational system, and then ending with some talking about what we wanted our schools to be in the future. So there were, you know, it was a, it was a day and a half of action-packed activities, but all reflecting on things that impacted our schools and where we wanted our schools to go. Lots of small group work, chances for people to share, everybody in the group shared.
How long does the process get involved? Three weeks, couple months?
To get ready for this?
To be ready and completed.
Yeah.
From start to begin.
Takes some time. There's a committee, a planning committee that gets together and identifies people in the community that should be invited. There's personal invitations that go out. Then, following the community forum, there are themes that are identified, then goals that are created and presented to the board, so, which, that all is done by a subcommittee, so. And then, of course, the creating of the strategic plan itself based on the goals. So we have the goals, and then what, what do we need to get to the goals? What do we need to do?
Are there anyone invited from other districts, from school districts, that may have possibly some input?
They could be.
Okay. Thank you.
Elizabeth? So I'm particularly excited about this. I participated in the community gathering for our now-used-up, done-whatever strategic plan, and I'm excited to hear about the process that you went through that you felt was really positive, because bringing in the historical aspect, having, I think that's, that was a critical piece that we missed, and I think that's so important for people to be able to talk about the history, and what they feel proud of, what they wish they could continue, like that, I think it helps bring people together. And so I am very supportive of this process. I would be careful of, I think personal invitations sound great, but this is a very, I think, over, overwhelmingly involved community, and so it, who knows which way you wanna go with that. It might just be, if you wanna be a part come, because this community in general really cares a lot about education. And then finally, as we move along in the process, it might be worth thinking about, we do have the CAPE acronym, that, what, how much do we change? How much do we, you know, I think we really do need a new strategic plan, and my vote would be more condensed, but that's another, but as far as the, you know, the, the mission statement, you know, there could be things that, you know, still are relevant, that, so who knows? But it's, it's exciting. Thank you for helping us embark on this.
I totally agree with Elizabeth. Thank you so much. We, it's very exciting. I think it's.
It is exciting.
Perfect timing that we're doing it with your arrival, and, and I wholly support it. I'm just curious, where would the 5,000 come from, the money? Do we have that built in somewhere? Just curious. Really, we have like nothing left.
We will look at the budget.
You will. Okay, all right. I mean, it's gotta be done well, and it's gotta be done right, and I know it costs money, and going through the town comp plan, we've hired two consultants just to approach our work, but just was curious about that one, so, no, thank you. John?
So I'd just like to speak again in support of the idea and the plan, and also to comment on the, the financial aspect of it. I actually think that this is some of the best money we'll spend, that this is something that's overdue and we've under-invested in, and it's really going to do it well, it's going to involve the community and really set a clear direction for what we're trying to accomplish, and really, that's where we have to start, and spending the money to have professionals who do this, and people that I've worked with before, to be able to produce that kind of a process, is really money well spent. So I'm highly supportive and very encouraging of this process.
Heather? Sort of to piggyback, and I had similar thoughts that a number of six years, that many people that you brought up, you need a very skilled and talented.
Yes.
Facilitator, or somebody who's a professional in this, what they're doing to do. So again, the work is important, the community input is important, and so I would be in support as well. I think it will come back in many ways in a more positive light. Thanks. Nasser?
Is the 5,000 starts the process, or will they, and we will get a report of the strategic plan as well? Is there gonna be other supplies cost after that, or not?
No.
Does this work?
I think your administrative team would take over after that and do that work.
All those in favor? Did you wanna say something?
So this is somebody that you've worked, like there's somebody specific in mind, and?
I do.
Yes?
Yes.
And you feel?
I don't know if she's available, I haven't talked to her, but I would certainly do some research to see if, I've been through the process with this person, and know that she's very good. She's worked all over New England really doing this, so if she's not available, I would research somebody else.
Excellent. Yeah, no, I fully support the process. I think it's really important to know where we're going, and have as many people on board with that idea as possible, so. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sure. I just wanna say thank you to Donna for asking for her support, and going ahead and including us on this. I really appreciate that, too.
All right, moving on to item seven. May I have a motion, please?
I move we approve a student educational trip to Greece during April 2019.
Put the mic in front of you. Put the mic in front of you.
Hello. I move we approve a student educational trip to Greece during April 2019.
I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Who gets to go to Greece?
Can I go? I know.
I think sophomores, juniors, and seniors, I believe, are, it's open to them?
I actually do have a question about it, if that's okay.
Sure.
It says the cost per student is $3,700, and descriptions of fundraisers to offset our bake sales at the cost, to offset the cost of bus transportation to Logan, and I don't know, maybe bake sales make a ton of money, but I can't imagine it making that much money, so I just have a question of, if it is open to all students, that's a good chunk of change, and bake sales don't seem like it balances that, so I'm just wondering if you can speak. I know we believe so strongly in this school and making it available to everybody, so.
It does seem a little inaccessible to some.
It does.
So you're absolutely right. Our bake sales are very popular, but they're not gonna pay for students to go to Greece. This is a trip that will largely be funded by families. I talked to Mary Page, she was a teacher, a social studies teacher at the high school, is gonna be leader of the trip. The bake sales largely will cover the bus trip to Logan Airport. Mary assured me that there are scholarships available through the company that organizes this trip, so that if families are really in need, and I think probably can contribute. I will say about, this trip is almost a non-school trip, and in the past, a long time ago, there were discussions with the board about whether this, even this kind of trip, because it's not really connected to school, it's not really coming out of a curriculum. It happens to be led by teachers, and if all the plans go the way they're supposed to go, there will be no lost school time either for teachers or students. The reason it's before the board is, depending on what happens with transportation, sometimes there are last-minute changes in travel arrangements and things like that, and it's possible that it could cost teachers or students up to a day, but no more than a day for travel. But the goal is, hopefully, that there'll be no lost school time at all. The insurance comes through the company, it's not really a school trip in that sense, if there's issues that go on, and that kind of thing. But the fund, there is fundraising that's happening, but it will be an expensive trip for the families who are participating in it, unless they apply for and receive a scholarship through the company that's organizing it.
Yeah. Your comment of it not being a school trip, I sort of have a different take of it, when it is the teacher pulling from the pool of the student body. That in and itself makes it seem like it's a school trip. The teacher, you know, is not pulling from the newspaper, and anybody who wants to go and is willing to come, please call me and sign up. But the fact that it's pulling from our student body, putting it out there, I'm sure it's being advertised, all the students in the school are seeing this, that in and of itself, to me, makes it seem like it's a school trip, whether it's directly tied to the curriculum or not. And I could be wrong on that, but that's just my take.
It's sort of an, it's sort of an in-between trip. I actually think there hasn't been advertising in school. We, I'm not positive about this trip, but I know the last time this similar kind of trip came up.
The Cuba?
What?
Was it, that's the Cuba?
No, Cuba was definitely a school trip.
Okay.
No, this was even before, Cuba was absolutely definitely a school trip that was connected to the students, and was advertised widely in school. I don't, I'd have to correct, to find out if I'm, if I'm wrong about that one.
Okay.
Perhaps, perhaps this one has been more than, it just hasn't registered with me. But it is an in-between one, so that's why we came before the board, but the insurance liability for this trip will not rest with the board, it will rest with the company that's sponsoring it, which they have, which actually was the company that arranged and organized the Cuba trips a couple of years ago, and previous trips before that. They're really excellent, they do a great job, but I think that is the major reason, at least historically, why the trip is, is before the board, just to cover the possibility that, and because there's a little bit of a gray area to it, so it made more sense to come before the board.
Are there, is there possibility, if there's a student from the school who would like to go on the trip, and does not get scholarship from the company, which is nice to hear that they offer that, if the school has funds that can help support that student to go, is that, or is that not happen?
That would be a big, that would be a big ticket item. That would be a, a big, that would be a big ticket item to be able to do. What there could probably happen is um, a grant request to the High School Parent Association or something like that. There are various ways.
So there are ways.
There are ways to help families and we would do everything we could that would, to support families. Um, I, I think there's already been, so anyway, so I, I think the families who have, have an interest in going have already sort of made their, identified themselves, although there will be other opportunities, I think, to, for kids to do that. So, so there, where there's a will, particularly in this community, there is typically a way, but it's not something that I could easily turn to the school budget for and say, yes, this is how we could do this. We might be able to contribute something with some creativity, but.
I just want to add um that these trips, I, as far as I've been aware of them, happen every two years. And they first announced, and I remember they did announce Greece as they did Cuba almost two years prior. So when my son was a freshman, um, he heard about Cuba and he went at the end of his sophomore year. So families and children who are interested, my son included, have that much time to save up, you know, for whatever allotment they're supposed to save up for. Um, just, it, there is a lot of um, roomway, so.
Thank you, Jeff.
Sure.
I have a question. I'm not sure if um, if there's anyone who can clarify it for me. So if this isn't a school trip, it's not a school sponsored trip, right? But it's before us to sort of approve it. So I think by, by us approving it, we're sort of saying, the board sees this, we see the number of chaperones. It sort of then becomes a school trip for, arguably, from a, you know, legal perspective. So my question is, how is that, how does it work? Let's just say the French class was sending a group of students and it was a school trip to France. Does the district have, have insurance that covers that sort of activity? And it, where does this fall in, in, in that arena? So is this covered by our insurance or is this, are they, are they outside of the program of the school?
I think the company that organizes this covers, has the insurance. Um, there was some information on this World Strides. Um, yes, actually, this pamphlet contains information on sickness, accident and trip insurance, so.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, there's a, it sounds like there's a gray area between a truly school-sponsored trip and then this trip, which is, it, it's pulled from the school, but you know, it sounds like we're saying it's not a school trip because it's not a specific class, but it is a teacher who's organized it within the school community, so.
How would it compare, Jeff, to a club sport that goes to DC for like debate or world council or? Do, do you know? I mean, because there's, they have to get from here to DC or wherever they go and it, there's.
In terms of cost?
No, in terms of, let's say, insurance, like.
Insurance, logistics, resources.
So insurance for a club trip that goes to DC, like if the AP government class goes to Washington DC, that goes before the board to give, and that's, that is covered. My understanding is, I'm not an expert, by the insurance of the school district. This is a different beast and, and parents have been made very clear, this is a different beast. That is, that's, that's why I think um, a number of years ago, when these trips were occasionally started, the board was, wanted to make sure that there was insurance in place from the company uh that would be kicking in in the event there was an accident, an injury or something like that. Um, so, so that's why we, um, Mary Page was sensitive because she has been involved in organizing similar trips in the past to make sure that the board has in front of it the insurance that's, that's provided by the company, that's essentially contributed to or paid for by the families who are going.
And then are the parents made, are they, um, is it made known to the parents that this is not a Cape Elizabeth school district trip?
So I talked, I talked with Mary about a number of things uh earlier today. I didn't specifically ask that question. What I do know is, I, I'm pretty sure because she has been involved in similar trips in the past, not just the Greece one, but before this, more comparable trips, that she's always been very clear with parents about that. I, there is certainly plenty of time to get some additional form signed to make that absolutely crystal clear and in writing that this is, this is essentially before the board to endorse the possibility that either the teachers or the students might miss a day of school. Um, and that's really the issue for the board more than anything else.
Elizabeth?
So um, I think that whether or not we define this as a school trip or whatever, I, I appreciate that discussion. However, you know, how, wherever it lands, I think that it's important that the board is aware of these trips. And so um, we may decide in the future that we don't need to approve these sorts of trips, but I think it would be important that we are aware. And um, as you said, especially, you know, the impact to the school day really is, I guess, where the school board has any say with anything to do with this particular trip, I guess. I, I don't know.
I, I would agree absolutely. I think we absolutely need to be aware of it, but we should be clear where it's falling in terms of, is it a school trip, is it not? And then, and the parents need to be aware.
Maybe the policy committee needs to look at the.
We could.
Tripology.
We're always looking for more things.
So the, the, the question then is also, is the motion before us the correct motion? Because this motion is written as proving it as if it were a school trip, rather than affirming we're aware of the impact that this trip may have on the school district, which is a very different motion. Because as it's written now, it may be very well the case that if we approve it as a school trip, while there is insurance in place, uh, some might view the district as secondary, uh, secondarily liable. So if, if what we're actually approving is the notice of the impact on the school district, we should um, think about amending the motion to say that, rather than it's written as all of the school trips are amended, it's on the same form that school trips are on. It's a very different thing than what we're actually voting on. So I would like to move that we amend uh the, the item seven to say we are uh, affirming and approving any impact this uh student trip may have on the district. So, any better word than that, yeah?
Any further discussion? That's a really good point, John. Thank you.
Do we have to vote on the amendment?
We have to vote on the amended amendment. All those in favor? Okay, great. Um, item eight, may I have a motion?
I move we approve the following job description, district mentor.
A second.
Any discussion? Donna, do you mind describing the district mentor?
Well, I'm going to call on Kathy to do that.
It seems we already have, is this just an update?
No.
Oh, okay.
Um, so we have um, for a, a number of years, provided a mentor to teachers who are new to Cape Elizabeth and carry a conditional or provisional certification. And we, it's actually a state mandate, although we would do it anyway, but we provide a mentor to them for two years. Um, it occurred to us that teachers, well, you know, educators, so anyone on a, on a teacher contract who um had professional certification but were new uh to Cape Elizabeth might still benefit from having a buddy whom they can ask all sorts of questions of and, and just get, get acclimated to the district more quickly. So, um, so the, the, the duties, duties are, I would say, less, less onerous than, than those um of a mentor who's moved, helping a, a teacher who's provisionally certified move to professional certification. This is really just, this is, is just, um, it just, just providing that go-to person for somebody who is new to the district.
It's an upper link.
It's an upper link, yes, exactly. It's an upper link for new staff.
Thanks, Kathy.
Okay, sure.
Any further discussion?
So I understand it's a paid position coming from a grant and it's starting next year, fiscal year two thousand nineteen.
The money.
Yes. I wrote a, I wrote a project um under title two A to provide the stipend for this position.
And thus far, there's only one mentor we are approving, right?
The, you, the, the other mentorship you've approved years ago, that's.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, this, so this, this is a new position, right?
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks for recognizing that need. All those in favor? Item nine, may I have a motion, please?
I move we approve the following twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen administrative and athletic extracurricular personnel nominations as listed in our packet, because they're numerous.
You have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Next, we have um the consideration of the following policies for first reading, IKB on homework, JJIF, management of concussions and other head injuries, and JJJ, high school co-curricular and extracurricular activities eligibility. No votes required over here to discuss.
Um, so uh, the uh, policy committee has been working um since last spring on homework policy and homework policy procedures. Um, before you, tonight for first read, you, if you look at the, the copy marked draft, there's another one right behind it that doesn't say draft, which, that can be a little tricky. We might work on um having redline next. Um, but so the draft policy is the, um, really, it's just a little bit of an update. There's no um substantial philosophical change. Um, so we worked with um all administrators from the buildings. We worked with um Kathy Stankard was there, we had parent involvement. And um, so those regulations are not before the board because board approval is not necessary, although we did talk about them, but the policy itself does need approval. And so what we did do is there were, there were some definitions and references that didn't really make a lot of sense that we, that we moved out. And um, we made sure that we wanted um to encourage communication among teachers around um what they're assigning, when they're assigning it and that sort of thing. And that philosophy went in here. Um, you'll notice that there's been a removal of um telling parents, you know, when and how much they're supposed to help students with their homework. And really, um, we, we, every home is different. It's hard, it's hard to say, you know, at this age level, you should, you know, help a little or at this age you shouldn't and that sort of thing. Because really, you know, homework is meant to be, you know, largely independent. And at the same time, the point was well made that every home does not view homework the same way or give it the same priority. And so it's, it's difficult to talk about parent involvement. Um, where one home might have, you know, somebody who um is very involved and, and helps out and there's a dedicated quiet space, another home might be chaotic and um, well-intended but not able. So it's, it's really not fair for the board to advise about parent involvement. So that's, that was kind of our thinking around that. Um, so although uh, the, what we did see, I want to say did the, the IKB dash R come before the board in June, I believe, where those were the regulations where we did make several tweaks. Just to sort of reiterate with that, um, you know, homework in the elementary levels has really been found to be useful as a um habit builder, but not, not necessarily a skill builder. And um, really, in, in all grades, we don't want, you know, the, the homework used as a punishment. Homework, you know, or not doing homework is not meant um to be used as a reason to keep a child in from recess in any of the grades, things like that that we, you know, we really stand for, we, you know, those are, those are still there. And we reiterated things around, especially in high school, communicating with teachers. If you feel like things are out of control, things are difficult, reach out, talk to your teachers. The teachers are very receptive. They're, you know, they want to hear from parents if things feel like they're spinning out of control for your student. So we kind of underscored those things. Um, so there's where we are with homework policy.
Just want to add one comment. I apologize, I, Elizabeth, I wasn't at the last policy meeting, so if you had covered this. But uh, one thing that we talked about was that the policy has a lot of good information in it and one of the issues might be that it's not necessarily making it to the parents' ears and that it, it would be a good idea. I, I did receive a policy in a, in a folder this week from my son's third grade teacher, so kudos to Mrs. Forsyte. Um, but I think that that was one of the things we talked about, was like, the policy is good. It just needs to be made known and that, and that would help, I think, get everyone on the same page, um, so.
I agree. One of the things that came out of committee um in June and then again at the end of the summer when we met, was that we really hope that the principals will be communicating with their teachers and reminding them that these policies exist and, and the board really expects teachers to follow these policies and procedures. And then to make these procedures um available and known to parents. And because there's some, I had a question today, I was at the MSPA meeting and someone raised their hand and said, hey, my son heard that um you guys are working on the homework policy and there's no more homework anymore. I was like, well, yeah, no. So I think it would be helpful. I agree, hope. I think that's the, one of the biggest things we can do is just improve communication around this policy in particular. So it would be great if, you know, in an email or something that, that this went out to all parents as well as staff. Policy and regulations.
John? Sorry, Susannah, you're running the meeting.
I'll have you for a second.
I couldn't.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, I don't have anything to say.
So um, in looking at the homework policy, it really does sort of go hand in glove with the regulations. And I, I still have concerns. I, I actually think that this policy could be and should be even more parent independent. I feel like homework, we don't know the home situations of all students and the policies need to apply to all students and homework should be independent of your home situation. Um, and that should be the standard. Now, that doesn't mean others, you don't, it's, it's, it, the question is what's mandatory? What's the floor? What's the policy on that? And that's, and I feel strongly that it should be independent, not required of parents. If, if they're not able to, then they, they shouldn't be expected to. Um, if they can, that's great and we welcome that, but it's what standard do you set as the minimum? The, the, the other thing is, um, I still continue to come back to if things in early grades, I'm very skeptical of homework in early grades and I understand the idea to build um work habits. But the thing is, unless those work habits are actually being taught in the school, we should not be sending homework home as work habits. Anything that's homework needs to be taught in the school first. And I don't think we're checking that that's happening. And if we're saying it's work habits, it's like free for all for work habits. And I think that's a bad idea. I think in, in general, unless we're going to do homework right, we shouldn't do it because the benefit is minimal and there's so many other things that is actually helpful to students in their learning, education and environment that are more so than homework. Eat dinner together, get outside, all kinds of things like that, particularly in the early grades, actually have a better effect. And I think if we're gonna say it's for work habits, the burden lies on us first to say, we're teaching those work habits. We taught them in the class and now we want to have you to practice them at home. And until such time as we can say, we know these work habits are being taught, they shouldn't be homework. And I would turn this sort of back to the director of, you know, teacher and learning and say, it's like, it's like, on homework, this is a big deal because these are kind of things, our problem in the school district is not necessarily skill mastery, it's more things along stress. We were having in the middle school now, the seminar on, on, you know, mental health and, and all kinds of issues around that. And homework is a big part of that. You know, if you're on the board now and you raise your hand and say, you know, most of the homework that came home for my kids was great. I wish they all had homework like that all the time. I don't, I'm not gonna raise my hand. It's not meeting the standards that we want it to meet and we have an obligation to make sure it does that first. And if it doesn't, don't do it. And that's not reflected in the policy. And, that's not reflected in the policy here, I don't think. You know, I think there's a lot of good ideas and a lot of things, and as you advance, but there's really is this sort of sequence that you should be doing it first in school, before it ever gets sent home. And if there's no checkpoint in our policy that says, I know this student can do this, I saw them do it in class, and now it's part of the homework. To me, that's what the homework policy should be, is that I know they can do it, this is something that will benefit from practice. Because otherwise, it's not a benefit, it's just a stress. How many times have you sat around trying to get your kids to do homework, and you look at the homework, you're saying, this isn't really helping them? So the question is, you know, homework policy and the way we set this thing is how we set the culture, and how we set the expectations. And, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. This happens to be something that, you know, that sort of got my attention when it came across my desk this time, I wish I had been involved more deeply earlier. But I actually think it's a really big deal, and a chance to sort of think about and turn the district in a better, more helpful direction for kids and parents. And so, I would urge that we look at this a little more deeply in terms of what homework is really beneficial, how do we keep it within that box and guarantee you what we send home is really worth doing? And then I think we're in good shape to sort of have this, a policy apply. But right now, we're sort of saying, here it is, whatever it is, you do it. And I think that's backwards.
If I may, just address, so, you touched on, we did talk about that in great, in great length in the policy meeting, and we did, we sort of unpacked the policy, and there is, there is actually language that addresses it, says, teachers have a responsibility to provide adequate understanding of the assignments, and also provide timely feedback, et cetera. But I think we looked, we thought about it, we thought, well, this isn't being communicated. We talked about the issue where your child comes home with something, and they say, I didn't, I don't know how to do this, we didn't cover this in math today. So the point was, it's there, but it's not being fleshed out, or it's not, maybe it needs to be discussed at the administrator's level each year, it needs to be sort of made, highlighted. And you're, you're doing that right now.
So, and I do think it is worth being clear about homework policies at the elementary level, the middle school level, at the high school level, because there are some significant differences. And the benefits at the elementary level are minor. And the work habits piece, like I said, unless we can say, we know they're teaching work habits, and I know they weren't for my kid, then the homework has no benefit, it's only a detriment. It's taken away from other stuff that could be good. So...
So John, in the regs, we do have delineations for elementary, middle, and high school around expectations. And, we did talk at length, and Jason was part of the conversation, and kind of spearheaded the top of the discussion around, could we do better at teaching the study habits we're sort of trying to build, and using homework to build? And so I believe it's a work in progress. And what I would kind of turn back to you, and turn back to the board, is, you know, homework is sort of a big deal. And so maybe it could be part of our discussion in the strategic planning, that it's kind of bigger than policy, really, which is, get the, get everybody kind of involved in this conversation. We love having this really high-performing, you know, basically we have a college preparatory high school, is that, you know, is there another way to do it? I don't know. Is there a better way, you know, I don't know, but let's, let's make this the bigger conversation.
So, I fully agree and endorse that approach, because what this seems like to me is, we understand that there's some fundamental issues here, and we're still working from the prior draft. And I was like, one of the things, lessons I learned doing a lot of presentations, is a guy used to tell me, you can't get a good short presentation by cutting down a big presentation. You've got to start fresh and get the concept right. And I just feel like, the concept we want in homework is not here in this policy. And I really feel like we need a fresh start on a, what is the high-level concept we want on homework? And that's exactly something that belongs in a strategic plan. But that's really a first, a high order, an important order of business. Because I don't think, you can't fix this with a comma and a deletion, and it is, is the concept of how it's approached, in terms of saying, we make sure that we teach it first before we ever send it home, that's not in here. It's, it's allowed, but that's not the crux of what's here. And all of the points that you sort of talk about how homework is used, I think we want to be very clear about, about exactly, you know, where those expectations lie. And again, I think we often do too much, and are worse for it in this community.
Thank you, John. I think those are really good points, and to be brought up the next policy, and then definitely, as you both have suggested, strategic plan. Liz, Kim relief, sorry.
I, so I appreciate all the work that you guys have done on this interval, this is the...
Yeah, and I don't know if this is even policy, it strikes me more as sort of the curriculum, curricular alignment, but, curriculum alignment. But, I feel like we've had, just as a personal at-home experience, years like in first grade, where we have homework every single night, and then in second grade, we have nothing. So, if we're, you know, kind of working on the idea of skill building in the elementary school years, I think that needs to be looked at as well. Like, I don't know if this is really policy, but it's homework, and I think if we're...
We did discuss it in the IKB-R, which is, but it's a recommendation, and not, there, you know, that kind of comes around vertical alignment, it would sound, to me.
Yeah, and that was kind of what I was... Thank you.
Thank you, I think it's a big concept, and I appreciate, I think we got the ball rolling.
We've had several months of robust conversation. And it will be back in, back again. Are people comfortable moving on to management of concussions? Because we do have Jeff Shad and Deb Braxton here to talk about, there are some substantial changes to the management of concussions and other head injuries, and we wanted to be able to talk to the board about this. It's not that we have just decided that we don't care about concussions anymore, or, but there have been some new developments since we originally adopted the impact testing plan that we talk about, and I don't know about you, but we all went into power school, and we all, I think for high school students, I don't know that we do it for anybody else, but, and we acknowledge that, you know, our student, if they play a sport, is going to have to do this impact testing baseline protocol, and that sort of thing. And if you've read through the policy, we are actually talking about moving away from that baseline testing. And it's not because we don't believe concussions are important, but there have actually been a lot of, there's been a lot of research and a lot of different practice since that was first implemented. So, if I may...
Yeah, and I'm, since you, I wouldn't have come up normally, but I came up, since you mentioned my name, but this is Deb Braxton, who works for the doctors in the offices that diagnose concussions, and is, is at the high school, and is very conversant with sort of the changing approach that doctors are now taking compared to when the policy was first, first implemented. So, Deb?
I'll try and give a brief synopsis. So about 11 years ago, the main concussion management initiative started. At that time, Mickey Collins, who graduated from University of Southern Maine, was working with, in Pittsburgh, with the Pittsburgh Steelers, and they were developing this test, which was called the Impact Test, to assess some sort of baseline neurological function. It evolved some things like speed of processing, memory, visual stuff. And so, at the time, there were a lot of different practices doing a lot of different things. And they were looking to standardize the assessment of a concussion. So they developed this baseline, sort of neuropsychological exam. It was computerized, and students could take it, and they would have a baseline, and then if they were concussed or injured, then we could readminister the tests, and then we would look for differences. And so, that sort of took hold here in the state of Maine because of the main concussion management initiative. And they were sort of spearheaded by Dr. Bill Hines, who worked out of Orthopedic Associates in Portland. And he would see a lot of the students, he'd take a look at the baselines, he'd see them afterwards, and compare, and do post-tests. Originally, when this started in the district, it was before my time, but some of those post-tests were done here at the high school. That sort of fell by the wayside, because they require a quiet space, a computer designated solely to impact testing, and then it required someone to interpret that post-test. I've gone to training through MCMI, but it was always Dr. Hines who gave those recommendations around, yes, this student's cleared to return to sport. So what has happened recently is that, we've been doing post-tests, pre-tests forever, for as long as I've been here, I'm starting my sixth year. And they started much earlier than that. But what's happening is, since Dr. Hines retired two years ago, and even before he retired, he really was one of the only people that was doing the post-test. You will not get a post-test from intermed, any medical partners, I'm blanking on the other one, Warren's point. Those folks were not doing it, it was only Dr. Hines, and maybe Dr. Lelet down at OA and Saco. So, what, what we found is that we're doing all these baselines, and no one's looking at them, and no one's doing a post-test. So then it behooves the question, why are we testing, and why do we need to, if no one's looking at those, the data? And so, that's why we're here tonight, because we feel that there's a huge, there's a huge commitment on the part of the school district, monetary as well as time, to obtain those pre-tests, and we have to chase this, we have to student athletes here, so they know that we've been, we have to chase them down in ninth grade and 11th grade. We need, we need approval from the parents, and then we have these test results that we do nothing with. So, we're proposing, because there are other standards and assessments, and ways that individual pediatrician practices manage concussions, we're proposing that we stop pre-testing our students. There are other schools in the district, I mean, not in our district, but in the area, like Falmouth has made it sort of, you know, your choice this year, if you feel like it. There are also other districts that are still doing it, but they're, in those districts, they're more Southern Maine, and the athletic trainers are full-time employees, they do the pre-test, they do the post-test, they manage it, and they have some sort of a consulting physician. And, that's how they do it in their districts. But what we're finding here is that we just don't have anyone doing posttests anymore, and so there's no need for the pre-test. The only thing, I do, I will make one correction, Elizabeth, when we have students sign the permission for the impact, they are also having the parents give permission to follow the school's protocol around concussion management. We're not asking to approve anything on that right now, we're going to have to come back, because that actually is a work in progress to look at that protocol. All we're asking for right now, in the new policy standard, is to just remove the pre-impact testing.
What I wanted to highlight for the board that you brought up in our meeting, is that no matter what, you know, impact, you know, pre-test, post-test, whatever, all students have to be cleared by a doctor before they can return to school and sports, and that sort of thing. So, none of that changes. And what, what Deb did share with me is that, over the years, there have been, you know, over, you know, over 100 concussions or something, there were a lot, a lot of concussions in six years. And then, you know, that's the number of doctors that these, you know, these students had to go see, and only one or two ever requested the pre-test. But there, so, I mean, that really does beg the question, why are we doing this? And, and we're not saying that we don't care, or that whatever, but the doctors aren't using them. And they still have to be cleared by a medical professional.
They do. If you're suspected of having a concussion, you're pulled from the game typically by the athletic trainer, and then we ask that you go and see a physician, and they can diagnose a concussion, or they can not diagnose a concussion, but either way, we need a note that says you have a concussion, or you do not. And if we don't have that note, you cannot return to sports until we have clearance. We, because, you know, really, everyone has, we send them to the doctor, and their doctor can determine whether the student has a concussion or not. And they've been doing that for years without post-test information, or even requesting pre-test information. They've just been doing it on their own court, and that's sort of where we're coming from. We just want to let them to continue to do that, and we can probably eliminate the pre-test.
The other, I'm sorry, no, sorry. The other point is that we worked on this particular policy to extend beyond just sports, because students get concussions not just from playing sports on our teams. And so, this policy really talks about all students, because a student can get a concussion outside of the school day, but that's going to have an impact on their school day. And it has, you know, nothing to do with sports that are affiliated with the school department. And that also would mean that they didn't have a school-run pre-test, because they were playing for the Cape Elizabeth Soccer Cup, or they were playing on the jungle gym.
Right.
Another question, so, pre-test is basically to identify if a person has had a concussion? Or, is that more of a medical record that should be done by the doctor, by individual families?
What it is actually, is just a, it's a baseline test. It doesn't say, oh, you've had a concussion, or, oh, you've had a brain injury. It's basically to have numbers that are for you, personalized for you or for the student. And then we, they would compare the post-test numbers to your personal baseline. But what they've found in general is, now we have some more normative data that can, that you can use to say, this looks pretty normal, that looks pretty abnormal, but they're not even using that either. They're just sort of, we've just been doing pre-tests, and we've not been using that data. It doesn't get used for anything unless someone needs a post-test. It just sits in the computer, and it stays there. And there's no real need to have it for anything else, so if you're not using it to compare to a post-test, it begs the question of, why do we need to do it in the beginning?
Well, my question would be, if, if a trainer is given the task of giving all those posttests, and the doctor isn't using, and the trainer can't clear that student to go back to participation anyway, and the doctor's not using it, that was sort of what won me over.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So that's concussions. Jeff, you probably want to stick around for the draft eligibility policy. So, the eligibility policy, JJJ, was a policy that we worked on and tweaked, in particular around adding different consequences for habits of work. And I think many of us have heard from, if you have high school students, that you've heard that there's going to be kind of a pause and a rethink about how to measure and how to work on habits of work. And so, Jeff had kind of flagged at the end of the school year last year, I think we're going to need to talk about this. And he delivered as promised in August. And so, we have essentially moved our policy back to a similar form of checkpoints. And habits of work are not a part of the eligibility policy at this time. Jeff, have I done you justice at all?
You did very well, Elizabeth. So, this all goes back to some changes, some things, some major things that are absolutely staying the same in terms of our approach to proficiency-based education, course learning targets at the high school, just as Kathy mentioned, or course learning targets at middle school and elementary school as well. But we learned a tremendous amount last year, so we're making some revisions, and at some point, probably, it would be great to have a more detailed conversation, so the board can have questions answered about what we're doing this year, but we're really focusing on higher-level skills of reading, writing, research, and other things that really know the kids, that are the most important things, wanting to generate a conversation among teachers about that. We did an awful lot of work last year, proficiency-based education. We have a lot of work in front of us with this new model as well. And so the proposal is to, as you said quite aptly, is to put a pause on habits of work. The way we were doing it last year was extremely well-intentioned, and had many unintended consequences that sometimes were counterproductive to the, to the intention. And so, we recognize that, I think students sometimes recognize that as well. And, given that our intention is to keep that pause, at least for this year, it didn't make sense to have the eligibility policy not in line with that. So, the proposal is to return to an eligibility policy... So the proposal is to return to an eligibility policy, which is strictly based on students' academic performance now. Let us get the academic piece of what we're doing, proficiency-based education, feeling more comfortable, right, and making sense to everybody, and then getting back to the issue of habits of work. So that's, that's the proposal, yes.
Jeff, what were some of the unintended consequences of habits of?
So some teachers were finding that students' work performance is actually lower than it had been in the past. That depended in large part on whether or not the students had, were, had, it depended what season we were in. If students were, a season was coming up that the students cared about, whether athletics or mock trial, or any, their jazz band or whatever, then they would seem to put on, put in a, well, let me step back and say this. Our work performance among students at Cape Elizabeth High School has never really been especially dependent, I mean, our students were blessed with students who worked hard. Ninety percent of them do ninety percent of their work. There are some, that may be a slight exaggeration, but it's, it's, that's, so, so, and what our teachers are finding is that was actually declining in some cases, even as we were now reflecting habits of work. And again, it largely had to do with, with that issue of what season they were in, because kids, in kids' mind, habits of work became all about eligibility, work performance became all about eligibility, and it was a very confusing message. And we could have spent a lot of time and cleaned that up, and I'm confident that when we unroll our next version of habits of work, it will be, we'll deal with those issues. But right now, we had so many other issues to deal with. I will also say that I think that the policy bred a fair amount of cynicism among students and teachers about the value of it, and so there were many mixed messages that were going around and misunderstandings. I don't know if Piper and Julie want to add anything about that, add your perspectives to it, but, but it was just, we want to do this, we want to do it right, it's really important. But right now, we want to get the academic side of proficiency-based education right as a higher priority.
Julia?
Well, I felt like, just like from others, like talking to other students, and like students who didn't play a sport or like participate in another activity, were just like, I don't really need to do my homework, because I won't, I don't need to care about if I'm eligible or not. So like, they don't need to care about their how grade, whereas students who like, do need to like be able to be eligible, like really found that like kind of unfair almost, because like they weren't doing, like the others, these other kids weren't doing their homework and like weren't, didn't really have a punishment for not doing it as much, like, whereas like these, everyone else who is playing sports did have a punishment for it.
And it was also, like, slightly, I don't mean to like critique any of the teachers, but it was slightly unorganized in how they took account for the homework that you did. Like, it would have been a lot better if maybe they counted your homework every single night to see if you did it. Because sometimes, like, you'd have kids who would do their homework all the time, and the one time that the teacher would check would be the night that they forgot to write it on their agenda. And then their grade goes down to a fifty. So it's unfortunate, and really think it reflected so much of the work and like efforts didn't put in, but when the teachers had to count the grades.
Well, I can, I can appreciate taking a pause on it if it's affecting certain areas negatively, and certainly, I can appreciate there's a lot of other things to focus on right now that take precedence. I, I do, I did like the, the theory behind habits of work and hope that it can continue down the line in a more, you know, in a more useful way. Thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth, for seeing us through all this.
Wait, there's a, there's a second.
So, just almost done, but for item 11, may I have a motion?
I move, we approve the following, is this it? Yeah, I move we approve the following policy as presented for second reading. There we go. JJCB immunization of students and communicable diseases.
Second. Thank you for finding that. Any discussion?
The board should be aware that the policy that came before us in August, we, we need to follow state law. That's all this does.
All those in favor? Okay, moving on, next, 12 committee reports, heard from policy thoroughly, thank you. Anybody else?
Policy's hot in here. Place is big, yeah.
Okay, requests for future school board meeting items. Upcoming meetings, I see that we have policy, next one is on September 24th, at three o'clock, central office. We have our school board retreat on September 25th, at 12, from 12 to 3 at SMCC. And then later on, we will have a workshop that evening at 6:30 at the library. And our last special business meeting, I mentioned at the town comprehensive public forum, they just changed the date. So the new date for you guys all to have is October 30th, which will be here at 6:00.
October 30th at 6:00?
October 30th at 6:00, yeah. And the student council would, would be most of them, and you're, all students.
If Erin is listening or watching or ever gets word, thank her for listing out the known upcoming meetings. That is fantastic. And we appreciate that very much. It's nice. And do we have a topic for the September workshop?
Gosh, I can't remember. No, but we're meeting tomorrow.
Right.
Yeah.
Just curious.
So no, we don't, we're meeting tomorrow, but our hope is that, one of the reasons we wanted to have the retreat as soon as we could possibly schedule it is to plan out the rest of our workshops for the year.
So when's the joint meeting?
It is this Thursday at 9:00.
It's not on here. That's the other.
Well, that was a, like a small committee.
Right.
I guess that's probably why it's not on there, but I can tell you more about it, John. All right. Item 15, may I have a motion?
I move we adjourn.
Great. Second. Any discussion? All those, oh, you have a discussion? No, okay, all those.
I'm ready to vote.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.